To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief Felton has some stuff he'd like to hand out this evening, so we'll let him do that before we go on any further.
I just have some class for you guys. We're a little bit behind, but I'll be coming up real quick.
Come on. Come on. You gotta coax 'em down here. Come on, we won't bite.
Are you sure?
John, positive.
Not hard, anyway?
Not hard.
Just nibble.
We've got some class made up for these guys, so do free. He's been with us for five years as of November 11th, 2022.
Good job, Bill.
Don't be sneaking off.
Stuart's been with us for five years as of September 2nd, 2020.
Good job, Stuart.
Dusty's daughter's been with us for 15 years, on October 29th, 2022.
Good job, Dusty.
You're gonna be 30, though.
You're still young. You've got a long ways to go between now and retirement.
Kerry Bolton's been with us for 15 years as of November 21st, 2020.
Good job.
Thank you, guys, for your service. Thank you.
Junior high school ladies.
Okay, moving on, under additions and deletions, I want to add an executive session for personnel matter before we end the meeting.
I make a motion, we add an executive session to the end of the meeting?
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? During none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on, is there a motion for the February 27th council minutes and the March 6 work session?
I make a motion that we approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion on either one? During none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. Motion carries. Moving on to reports, Councilman Bolton. I was gonna say, yeah, I wanna make sure people move around here, so I've gotta get my eyeballs on you.
I have none right now, thank you.
Councilwoman Nunn.
Ah, yes. I asked Chief Felton if he would introduce to the council the newest sergeant in training, Sergeant Bruno, who will only be part-time, as Bruno has a lovely, loving family to take care of. A very positive point is that the town will not need to furnish a personal vehicle for Sergeant Bruno, as he'll just take over Chief Felton's vehicle.
He's sleeping in the drawer. Anything else?
Ah, yes, one more note. Our condolences go to the Douglas Town Council on the sad loss of their mayor. Our thoughts are with them as they work to move their town forward.
We don't have anything, but I'm planning on going, attending the WAM regional meeting for Saturday.
Yeah, for the new meeting on the 18th at 11 o'clock.
Can we get any information on the time then?
It's at 11 o'clock. We just got, we got an email just the other day. I thought it was at 11, or was it 11 or 1?
Well, it includes a...
A lunch, it's up, so I think it starts on...
Anyway, I was gonna attend that.
Yeah, I was gonna go to it.
A quick question, is that where some of this training is being done that we're required to take?
Uh, no, it's not actually that. It's for the, it's for the northeast Wyoming region of WAM, all the communities that we're involved within. Includes like six or seven communities. It's us, Douglas, Lusk Rock, you know, Lusk, and Chillette, Buffalo, Sheridan, Man...
Lusk?
Yeah, everybody up in Sundance. It's, there's like six or seven different regions in the state, and they're wanting to have a new meeting, and probably elect some new officers to run things. And, uh, and then they, when they get, when they get done, they have a, a short tour of the city of Douglas for anybody who wants to stay and go through it. But that's on the 18th, but you should have gotten an email. I got, it was an email, or I got one from Mr., from J.D. Cox.
I didn't either.
I got one, but...
Yeah, I got one a while back.
Yeah, I got it just...
And, um, that was a while ago.
I'll make sure, Judy.
Okay, from Rick Bridger. Came on Friday.
John, did you get the email?
It was sent out to 47 people, and I don't know if all of you are on that, but...
No, I wasn't.
We'll make sure, but it's actually set up the time. Let me read it to you really quick. I've been sending, I don't know why, I can't get it to come back up for now, because I For some reason, I won't let mine download, so that's where it came from. We'll get it figured out, get it, we'll get it sent on to everybody, so you know, but it's on the 18th, and I believe it starts at 11 o'clock. They've got an address on South, on Fourth Street down there, some, some building, so I don't know why mine, I can't get it to come up on mine, but we'll go from there, but yes, it is on the 18th. Do you have anything else for us?
No, that's it.
Okay. Councilwoman Collins.
The only thing I have is I have a meeting this coming Wednesday with the municipal court judge in reference. They're trying to line up some translator services in the area, and Chief Felton's also gonna come with me, and we're just make sure we have open communications between municipal court and the police department, but the main thing is, do we need additional translation services and that sort of thing? So, that'll be Wednesday.
I wanted to put out there that we sent out the allocation letters for the eight, eight others. Those will be due April 7th to my office. The Corbly Scholarship is available, it's posted on the website, and that is due to me, anybody who's, who's filling those out, those are due to me on the 14th of April. And then, last, the WAM Summer Convention is gonna be in Cody, June 7th through 9th. They don't have the agenda yet, as soon as they get the agenda...
7th through 9th of...
Of June. And so as soon as they have the agenda, I'll get it out to you guys, and if you guys would let me know if you're interested in going, that would be great.
On those letters, are those the people that are putting in for budget requests? Okay, 'cause somebody called me today saying they were looking for something on the website and couldn't find it, so they've been sent out, but I can tell them that they should be receiving it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything for Tammy? Not Kelly Treter.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I have actually nothing at this time.
That's always good.
Working on budget. We're good.
Just so you have our money, that's all you need.
Randy, Public Works.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Crew's been busy with ice removal and snow removal and garbage collection, water meter reading, equipment maintenance, and we're replacing some of the heaters in our shops that we can't get parts for anymore, and they died, so we've bought some new ones, and the crew's putting those in. I'll be attending the hospital district board meeting on March 30th at 6:00 PM on the easement for the walk path of the Rock of the Glen. I gave each of you a copy of that drawing from CEPI. Once they get the okay, we'll get the easement going, and I'll get them working on a budget for us.
Randy, is that going to be fenced on both sides, that path, or will it be an open path?
No, they're following the fence on theirs, following the fence on the old Gates property up.
And the rest of it, we'll have it fenced up?
No, it's wide open.
Okay.
Okay, Randy, oh, wait a minute, let me get, wow, he stood up. He's helping at the bit.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Did issue a stop work permit on the Four Aces Building. They needed to submit plans to State Fire Marshal's Office, they didn't do that, so they shut them down, asked us to do the same, so we did it. They're working now to get the, the right plans submitted, and we gave them a little leeway to do a little bit of work in the meantime. The trailer fire, he promises he'll have it cut up this weekend from steel. We're kinda giving him a break, because we also inherited an RV trailer that needs to be burnt. They asked us, the owner asked us if we would burn it to the ground. The fire department has agreed to do it. We're gonna probably do it out by the ponds, and then we'll combine that metal with the metal down at the trailer park and get it all hauled off, so should work out in our favor. I talked about the mobile home permits, working on that. I wanted to take a little time out on that. I, I was thinking I'd have it by the next time we met. I wanna get it blessed through the lawyers to make sure that I'm, everything's kosher, and then we'll take it to the commission, and then we'll take it to you, so we'll, I'm not sure what that timeframe will look like, so. And then, the last thing I got is the post office, picked a fight with them, the management company that owns that building. The potholes, they've agreed to fix them within the next two weeks, a temporary fix, fill them in. If they don't, we're gonna fine them. They've got contractors lined up that will do it in that timeframe, and then a permanent fix should be the end of June. We gave them, we got contractors lined up that would do that by the end of June, so again, if they don't do that, they're gonna get fined. Then the handrails is the same thing, they gotta fix those in the next two weeks, and then a permanent fix on all the handrails that follow with the, end of June. So hopefully, we get them to move, so, see what happens. That's all I got.
Thank you. See how that battle goes.
Evening, Mayor and Council. So, tonight, I just wanted to say thank you for letting me have the opportunity to serve as the Town Square Director in Community Development, but I did give my notice today, and I wanna say thank you again for all the opportunities that I had for the town of Glen Rock. And with that being said, on the tourism board, we put in a grant for about $38,000 for a fiberglass statue for Town Square, so they'll be working with Candy Benedetta, your, and you guys to get a statue down there.
What's it, a statue?
You guys, we have to decide. Probably the horse, we can't, like, they want to brand that horse, the Rocky, Rocky Glen Horse, so I will let Jen...
Maybe a white miniature horse with a...
With blue eyes. How about blue eyes, and we can get a horn for her? And her name would be Sunny.
Yes.
Okay.
Second, second idea, Mandy, could we put a Pony Express rider down there?
Yes, and that's kind of where that, the Rocky...
For your Pony Express rider?
Yes, I will let Jen know that you're interested in that. Other than that, ice skating was super slow this week, and I think we need to, we have a lot more followers on Facebook, but we need to, you know, continue marketing and all that stuff. But again, like I said, I just wanna say thank you for the opportunity to work for the beautiful town.
Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you.
Chief Felton.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Not a whole lot to update you on. I have been attending the public information officer training, as I stated, I would be the last meeting. Dispatch Supervisor Molten is also attending. It's been a pretty good class so far. I've got a great blooper reel going of her videos, liner all getting mysteriously deleted, but I am keeping hers. Our newest officer, Rachel, is attending the crisis intervention training. I've talked about that before, but it is important to me that every one of our officers receive that training, so she's gonna be doing that this week before she goes to the academy in a couple of weeks. The Wyoming Law Enforcement Academy actually reached out to me today, asking if I could assist with their active shooter evaluations, which will be taking place on Thursday over in Douglas with all the newest cadets throughout the state, so I'm excited to go over and lend a hand with that, but outside of that, just business as usual for us, so still trying to get parts for cars and get everything logistically lined up for that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Jared, IT.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Just finished up some more fire hall work, was able to get one of their computers resurrected and, and back in service, and so I've got a few more to replace and, and kinda get their stuff all up to date, and then working on some budgeting stuff for the coming year, and yeah, and then just break and fix, and fix and break. A little more break than fix, but we're working on it.
Jeff, do you have anything for us this evening?
Yeah. I guess first question, or first thing is, good evening, Mayor and Council. April 1st, is that when you want budget in then, Tammy?
Um, well, for you guys, I think you guys just deal directly with Kelly.
Usually goes to the allocations.
Oh, okay, so, you can have those to me, well, we're requesting their, they come in by the 7th, but if you have them by the 7th...
I'll shoot you an email with it here next week or so. Just kind of an update on the fire department, we've, the new truck we ordered a year-plus ago is done. We went down three weeks ago, I think it was, and did the final inspection on it. It come out so good, though, they asked if they could take it as their showpiece for FDIC this year, so that truck will get here, it'll go to FDIC in Indiana, which I think's a pretty good feather in the cap for a small community to have their, their stuff put on display. But it'll go there, and then it'll come from, straight from there to here, so we look for it probably the first, oh, probably by the 5th of May, I imagine it'll be, be in the fire hall and getting ready to get put into service. The command truck that Chief Felton and Sean and I went down and looked at, we got the one that we thought was the better of the bunch, so they're just, it's on the list to get checked mechanically and whatnot, and then I guess we need to decide if we wanna paint it, or we wanna leave it that cool camouflage green. And, so, I mean, to me, I don't, I don't know that, you know, it's up to you guys on that, I guess, but we'll, we'll get that taken care of as far as payment for that and the, the maintenance, and then the militaries that we've been waiting on for two years down there, they guaranteed us by May that they'll be done and, and, and here, so we'll, won't hold our breath on it, it's...
I hope they do, since they might be put into use in a big hurry.
Well, you know, we, we haven't gotten rid of the ones that they were set to replace, so I, I mean, we're, we're safe that way, but it'd be nice to get the extra water capacity and a little bit newer, newer truck underneath it and, and stuff. And then, we're just kinda going through the, the budget stuff, had our FSA meeting today, and the radio grant that was out, it's like about 10% of what the requests were for that, so I think it comes out to about $11,000 per...
That's about what it's gonna take to buy one radio and get it installed.
Well, we, by golly, we got one handheld in the dispatch base station, so I figured we did pretty good.
You did not, didn't do bad.
Yeah, and a charger.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I mean, they broke them radios out, I've never seen it like that, where you even had to buy the battery separate, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's grant time, they're gonna make their money, so that's all we got, we've had, it's been a long winter, we'll just leave it at that, I think. We've had some issues with trucks freezing out on calls and, and stuff, and parts are, parts are tough to get. I mean, as anybody knows, it's got a vehicle broke down, we've had bypasses going on drain valves and everything else this year, because things are just froze up, so we're working through it, oh, and I think everything's in pretty good shape right now, so.
Have we been lucky that we haven't had a fire in some of this wind?
Mm-hmm.
I just, I think about that sometimes.
Only good thing about it is, is there's lots of snowdrifts to stop it.
Oh, no, that runs right on top of, we've seen that.
Jump right over the neighbor's house to mine.
It, it, we had one today, and it was way out, Ross Road Jenny Trail, truck lost its driving, drivers off of it, and rolled down off the road into grass, and it was surrounded by snow, and, you know, the 40 minutes it takes you to get out there, and, and a couple hours to get it out, I guess it's one good thing, you're not gonna wear nothing out when it's like this.
Or no one's house was sitting out there.
You know, that's, that's the thing that's probably been the most impressive, is we haven't had that structure call with the cold weather, 'cause generally speaking, when, when it gets brutal cold like we've had, you get something like that, so hats off to the people for paying attention to what they're doing with space heaters and stuff like that, and I think the technology's gotten a little better with, with some of them, too, as far as the tip-over protection and things like that, so. That's all I got, unless anybody's got anything else for me.
No, thanks for the report.
Okay, have a good week.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, I think that's it for reports. We'll move on to items from the floor. Is there any items from the floor this evening?
Evening, Mayor and Council. What's the, what kind of hopes you gotta jump through to make some streets in Glen Rock one-way?
A lot. It just depends on where you're, what you're talking about and where.
Well, Grove Street, for one reason, is narrow until you get to the main, and when you got, particularly you got school involved, I mean, it's basically, people parked on both sides of the road, it's, it's a one-way street. That's one I'm thinking of, and then...
Grove's wider than Fur, it's, well, yeah. Fur's wider.
But I, but I'm saying, is there any way that you can steady? I'm sure there's, there's a couple of streets that could probably be made one-way, but I just thought I'd ask.
Well, it's something we'd have to have, have engineering look into, and we have to have a, be able to have a, a good pattern of traffic flow and control, so we don't create problems for the neighborhoods.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, so it would be something we'd have to have the engineers look at.
Mr. Nunn, are you talking about, for instance, one, maybe like up Grove and down Fur, since those are both ordinarily...
Talking about from Grove, headed up to the main drag.
Right, and then...
And then...
What, they're on the end of the school, up to Fourth Street, what you're talking about?
Exactly, and then maybe...
The first two blocks of it, from like Second Street...
And then Fur Street, which is the next one over...
Right.
Both of those are narrow.
Both of them are narrow, that's just, that's two that I can think of right off the bat. It would save the, it would save the problem, because I know there's been talk in years past to make, put sidewalks there on Grove Street by the school, which is pretty expensive to do that, to widen that street out, I guess.
To widen it would be, would be buying private property to get it done, that's back in the day.
That would be more expensive than making one-way.
Well, it might be expensive, but you save one squished kid.
That's right.
And I'm just talking, 'cause I live on Grove Street.
You know what I'm talking about.
You are 100% correct, those kids are walking out in the middle street, 'cause there's no sidewalk available.
It's a safety issue, I mean, that's it. Now, how do you have the return, you know, I don't know all the street numbers, but you can make them return back to the Fourth Street.
But that's the area you're concerned about?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other items from the floor? If not, we'll move on to new business. First order of business is, let me get to it here, ordinance number 739, and ordinance supporting the continuization of the 1% sales tax for third and final reading. Is there a motion?
I move that we do the third and final reading on this ordinance, 739.
There is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, okay, is there any discussion?
Should we just cut it down, or?
Oh, well, yeah, since there's motion, if there's no discussion, I will call for a vote. It's been, it's been voted down by Douglas, so we need to take care of it and leave it in a situation where it's not just laying in limbo, so if there's no other discussion on it, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed by nay.
Nay.
Next order of business is the Town of Glen Rock ordinance number 741, amend the regular meeting time. An ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 5, Article 40 of the Glen Rock Town Code relating to regular meeting time, whereas the time stated in the Glen Rock Town Code for regular meeting, the governing body is 7:00 PM, whereas the governing body has decided it would be more convenient to meet at 5:30 PM. Therefore, it be ordained by the town, the council of the Town of Glen Rock in the state of Wyoming as follows the regular meeting time. For the governing body of the Town of Glen Rock will be at 5:30 PM on the second and fourth Mondays of every month. Amendments to be such in, in the future may be done by resolution. Section 1, Amendment 2.05.040, regular meetings of the Town of Glen Rock Municipal Code is hereby amended as follows. Before amended, 2.05.040, regular meeting, regular meetings, the governing body of the Town of Glen Rock, Converse County, Wyoming shall be held the second and fourth Monday of each and every month commencing at 7:30 PM. After amendment, the same ordinance, regular meetings of the Glen, of the governing body of the Town of Glen Rock, Converse County, Wyoming shall be held on the second and fourth Monday of each and every month commencing at 5:30 PM. And this is for vote for, on first reading, so is there a motion?
I so moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
This is how Douglas does their council, I believe, Mr. Mayor. I believe that they had a 5:30 meetings down there, and apparently floats all right.
I think, aren't they at 5:30 or 6?
I don't know.
I know they start earlier than we do, I just know that, but...
I think Casper does also.
I think one of them's at 5:30, 6, or whatever, but no, it's, it's fine to change it, we, but it was under, it was under ordinance, so we have to do the readings to change it, but what we're gonna do after that is we've added to, in the future, it can be done by resolution, so it'll be a one-time thing instead of three, if we ever need to change, ever want or need to have it changed. So, is there any other discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the next order of business would be bills and claims. Is there a motion?
I move that we pay our bills and claims as presented.
There's a motion?
I'll second it.
There's a second, any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote on that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. That carries. Motion carries, pay our bills and claims. So, the next thing we need to do would have somebody make a motion to move into executive session.
I'll move that we move into executive session.
There's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. Motion carries. We will move into executive session. When we get done, we'll come back, there won't be any voting on anything that needs to be done, but, so you can leave if you would like, and we'll be back shortly.
Is this running long?
No, it'll be short.
Okay, so...
It won't take long.
Just hang around.
Yeah, it'll be short.
Thank you.
Let's sign this.
Let me see where I'm supposed to...
Let's sign this for Kelly really quick, so she doesn't have to wait on us.
Thank you, man.
We'll be really short, Bob.
Having to go right home.
Catch it.
Yeah, it won't take long, guys. Okay.
Why don't we manage yours too?
Yeah.
I've got to go, I'm staying up.
Well, that can be true too. You didn't...
Bruce, I did it. So, when you come back down, when the clothes, one of you stopped that?
Yeah, I'll do that, I'm going to shut the microphone off now.